This is the latest session of the City Council for the 15th of January. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Rosenbarker?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
We have a quorum. Read the agenda for this evening. We will have approval of minutes, although there are none to be approved, so we'll skip that. We'll have reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, council committees, and the public, any appointments to boards and commissions. Legislation for second reading and resolutions includes ordinance 2002, final approval to issue economic development notes and lend the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Walnut Woods, 818 East Miller Drive, and Reverend Butler Apartments, 1202 West 11th Street, Bloomington RAD 1 LP petitioner, committee of the whole recommendation 800. Legislation for first reading includes ordinance 2003 to amend Title IV of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Business Licenses and Regulations Regarding Adding Chapter 4.32 Nonconsensual Towing Businesses. We'll have additional public comment, council schedule, followed by adjournment. Let's start with, since there are no minutes to approve, we'll start with reports from council members. I'll start on my left with Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I was saddened to hear about the passing over our winter break on Christmas Eve of the very gracious Peter Jacoby. He, of course, is well-known to this community as the long-term columnist of the music beat. He had actually posted his last column, which was a review of the Bloomington Chamber Singers' Messiah on December the 15th, and then again, we lost him at age 89. He lived a very long and certainly productive life, but I thought it was important to make note of that today due to Peter Jacoby's long-term service on the Bloomington Arts Commission. His expertise in his field of journalism and his knowledge of the arts was an extreme contribution to the work of the Bloomington Arts Commission. And again, I was a regular reader of his column in the HT, and again, I thought it was important to just make a note and to say thank you and to recognize his great achievements to make the city of Bloomington a more artful and musical place. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I have no reports.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No report.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No report.
Councilmember Rallo?
No reports.
Councilmembers Scambaluri?
Just a brief thank you and shout out to Beth Rosenbarker. I attended a meeting of arts forward last night, a group of local arts organizations, and the focus of that was transit, the focus of the conversation that evening was transit. And she led just a masterful discussion and a very robust conversation on that subject and did a wonderful job, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarker.
No reports.
Councilmember Sims?
No report.
I also have no report. Let's go now to reports from the mayor and city offices. I believe we have two reports tonight. We'll have 10 minutes for each one. I believe Mr. Wason is starting, or Mr. Kelson, who Mr. Wason is.
Good evening, council members. It's always an honor and a pleasure to be here this evening, to be in front of you to present. And I'd like to highlight some of the important work taking place in the Department of Public Works, as well as throughout the city of Bloomington. Over the last several years, we are especially proud of the increasing investments we are making in sidewalk construction, maintenance, and repairs, as well as a citywide effort to increase the number of compliant ADA ramps throughout the inventory. I do want to make note of the picture on this very first slide here because I think it's something fun to highlight and really pretty awesome to highlight. This is Tony Carroll with our street department, one of our concrete crew members, crew leaders. Tony and his crews do a great job on sidewalk work throughout the community, but this picture highlights something that we're especially proud of in the sense that you see him here replacing an old WPA 1939 sidewalk. So we worked very closely with the Historic Preservation Commission last year to come to an agreement where whenever we were doing work on these WPA sidewalks, where we would save a nice section of it, save any of the stone that we remove, and then build modern sidewalks for the rest of the portion of the sidewalks. To repair to those historic standards for the entire segments really can blow budget quickly, but we work closely with the HPC and are really proud of these efforts. You can see the stone marker for 1939 there. In 2016 and 2017, the Department of Public Works, in conjunction with the mayor's office and the innovation director, made unprecedented investments in collecting condition index data in a modernized way for our entire transportation network. This condition index data provided us up-to-date information on the condition of all of our segments of pavement, our sidewalks, our traffic signs and signals, as well as our stormwater infrastructure. Here's just a map that kind of shows, gives you an idea of how that data can be presented in dynamic ways, and we'll continue to use that in the years to come. With the support of the city council, we have increased both our annual in-house budget for sidewalk repair and maintenance through our very talented crews at the street department, as well as increasing our annual allocation for contracted sidewalk construction, repair, and maintenance. This slide highlights some 2018 and 2019 data. In 2019, the street department repaired or replaced 3,358 linear feet of sidewalks. They replaced 72 ADA ramps, and then our contracted construction did just over 3,000 feet of sidewalks and 30 ADA ramps. Overall, these important investments are furthering our commitment to make infrastructure upgrades for all users of the transportation network. One of the proudest achievements to date has also been the relaunching of our sidewalk repair assistance program. We relaunched that here in 2019, which allowed residents to participate in a program where we did a 50-50 match on sidewalk repairs. The city would cover 50% of the cost and homeowners would cover the other 50%. That led to 1,200 feet of sidewalks being replaced or repaired, and then we've also encumbered some of those $20,000 and have scheduled an additional 800 feet of work that'll take place here in the next month or two. An additional point to note is that beyond the investments made by the Department of Public Works, our colleagues in the Planning and Transportation Department have been hard at work managing projects that also add to the network of sidewalks, side paths, and updated ADA ramps in the community. The most recent examples can be seen at Winslow and Henderson, the project that's ongoing down there, building a side path on the north side of Winslow. The 17th Street project from Arlington to Vernal that should wrap up later this spring, as well as the over 90 updated ADA ramps throughout the downtown as part of Phase 2 of our downtown curb ramp replacement project. I hope it's apparent that not only are we proud of these investments and efforts, but that we also thank the council for their continued support in increasing our annual allocation for these investments. I'd like to take a quick second here and also highlight two other projects that we've got ongoing. The downtown alley projects, we're going to go out to bid later this month with what I referred to as the downtown alley enhancement project for the Bluebird block, the cross-section of alleys there where we'll do art installations, lighting upgrades, as well as pavement maintenance and other activation activities. From there, we'll move to the block on the due north side of the Courthouse Square. We were hopeful to have already started that project, but we're working closely with utilities to replace a 100-year-old water main that exists that we need to get out of there. The other one I'd like to highlight really quickly here is we're going to be beginning our public outreach efforts on the Kirkwood Maintenance Project. This will be where we replace the dilapidated crosswalks on Kirkwood between Walnut and Indiana, where we add public safety and homeland security-approved bollards and the sleeves for those for the ultimate flexibility with special events, and then we'll also be replacing the pavement from Walnut to Indiana over the course of the summer. So with that, I've taken my five minutes, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We have about four and a half minutes left for questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Wason? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask that you send the council office the PowerPoint that you just used.
Oh, yeah, we sure can. Yeah. If I could also add, and if anyone would like more information, I know I only had a few minutes tonight, but I think everyone knows I'm always available to meet and go through these projects and talk more at length if you have other questions, but yes.
Indeed. Councilmember Smith?
If the sidewalks are pretty much unusable, are the citizens still subject to the 50-50 repair and/or replacement? How does that work?
So the 50-50 project is an application process that we go through, and for these first few years of the relaunch program, we're focusing on areas where CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, can be expended. Those tend to be in lower-income areas and such, so we're really focusing on those areas for the 50-50 program at this time. But as the council knows, you know, the city code does have language where the adjacent property owners are responsible for maintenance and upkeep of sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Mr. Wason, just remind me, the alleyways improvements were meant to be for pedestrian accessibility and potential connectors downtown, and does that include lighting, you know, other safety features, cameras, that sort of thing?
We haven't done cameras, but for both the block due north of the square and the block where the Bluebird is located, we've already installed additional lighting in coordination with BPD. And then we also, yeah, so it is, it's to enhance pedestrian access and, as well as activate the alleys. You know, we're still working on what exactly activation will look like in certain areas, but we're really, you know, some of those alleys, just getting the pavement updated and getting curb ramps updated and such will be a great improvement, let alone artwork and other activation activities.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. Wason. For the presentation, you mentioned a couple of repaving and sidewalk projects in the context of Kirkwood between Walnut and Indiana.
Yes.
And forgive me for not knowing better on the spot, but is there a redesign process? Is that happening, or is that just a discussion that is not happening? And how does that factor into those projects?
Yes, so with, we've been planning the Kirkwood Maintenance Project. Overall, Kirkwood needs updated pavement and crosswalks. We've got dilapidated crosswalks from the buses and the pavement needs replaced, so this is kind of a first effort at just getting some maintenance done. And then while the larger conversations and context of what Kirkwood will be into the future does take place over the coming years, but this is more just maintenance. We had, hopefully, we would originally scheduled to try to get it done last year, funding, the first bids came in higher than expected. And with that, I do want to thank our partners at NDOT. NDOT did provide us some community crossing grant money for the Kirkwood Maintenance Project, so that was a big partnership with them as well. Thank you. Yep.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
What is your policy on keeping pedestrian access open during construction projects?
So the policy of the Board of Public Works and in conjunction with the Planning and Transportation Department is that we would have a walk-around whenever possible, whenever it fits and makes sense, and so we're always striving to do that. We work very closely with the engineering team and the folks that are bringing development or remodels forward to try, to do everything in our power to get pedestrian walk-arounds and pedestrian access near those projects.
Does anybody from the city actually go out and look and make sure the access is open?
We have regular conversations with contractors throughout the downtown and throughout the city, yes. Planning and transportation staff has, and the engineering team, at least one employee that's working on those sorts of things throughout her day, and I know she stays busy with a lot of the right-of-way improvements, but also reminding the contractors and development representatives to keep those walk-arounds open as they're required.
Thank you. One final question in this area. So who determines whether it's possible to keep pedestrian access?
So the engineering staff works closely with the developers, so the engineering staff with Planning and Transportation in conjunction with us in Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
And that wraps it up neatly at 10 minutes. Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Wason. We now go to a similar presentation on waste of energy with Vic Kelson, Director of Bloomington Utilities. Mr. Kelson?
Good evening, council. I'm Vic Kelson, Director of the Utilities Department. Adam's got my presentation up, so here we go. I'm here because last spring, Mayor Hamilton established a Waste to Energy Task Force that I've been leading to look into the possibilities of changing the way we do digestion at the Dillman Road Plant, both for wastewater applications and also for municipal solid waste applications. CBU uses an aerobic digestion system to reduce the volume of wastewater sludge at the Dillman Plant. Then we haul it to a landfill. Similarly, our sanitation department and the Monroe County Solid Waste District, they also haul organic wastes as part of the municipal solid waste stream to a landfill. Aerobic digestion, as we're using, reduces the volume of the waste that we have to haul, but it emits carbon dioxide. You can build something called an anaerobic digester that reduces the volume of the waste sludge, and it generates methane biogas. Anaerobic digesters can also digest the organic portion of municipal solid waste. So the question the task force was asked is, can we employ anaerobic digestion to reduce our waste streams, generate vehicle fuel, and reduce our carbon footprint? That's our question. I had it on there twice. I apologize for that. Just a little bit of background, generally speaking, there are two kinds of sludge that come from a wastewater plant, and the pointer doesn't work, but the big dark brown line is primary sludge. Primary sludge is the stuff that falls out of wastewater when you put it in a tank, so you can imagine what that's made of. That stuff has a lot of organic material in it, and it's terrific fuel feedstock for an anaerobic digester and makes a lot of methane. Our Dillman Plant doesn't have primary sludge. Its configuration only puts everything into aeration right away, and we don't separate out the stinky stuff before we send it through the plant. So if we want to do anaerobic digestion at Dillman, we have to build primary clarifiers, we have to build handling equipment if we want to co-digest municipal solid waste, or at least the organic portion of it. We have to build the digester itself, and then we have to build facilities for utilizing the biogas, and that can either be used as a vehicle fuel. Typically, we would inject it onto the pipeline and then take it out where we need it, or you can use it to generate electricity at the plant. This is a picture of what the Dillman Road process flow diagram might look like if we added anaerobic co-digestion. What you see there is we add the primary clarifiers, you get the dark brown sludge, it goes into the anaerobic digester, it's mixed with food waste, and fog is fats, oils, and grease, which we get from our grease interceptors and so forth. That's digested there without an addition of any air, and it generates that methane biogas. The solids then are reduced in volume, and they go off to solids handling. This is an artist's conception or an engineer's conception of how that would look at the Dillman Plant. So the black stuff is all the new parts that would have to be built. Altogether, the estimate is it's about $30 to $35 million to do a project like this at the Dillman Plant. We did look at all the waste streams that we could identify that could potentially go to the Dillman Plant. I won't go into these in detail right now, but it's basically adding the fog, the food waste, and we can also haul the sludge from the Blucher Pool Plant over to the Dillman Plant. So there's quite a bit that we could bring there. We also used models that were generated by two engineering firms that we worked with to look at how much gas we might be able to generate. Total, we're estimating just under 100 cubic feet per minute. That would generate, if you made electricity from it, about 354 kilowatts. By comparison, the Dillman Plant uses, on average, 900 kilowatts, but we're pulling that down a bit with the solar panels, and even farther with the projects we're beginning to do to improve the efficiency of our blowers. The financial reality of this, though, is that debt service for a project like this would be on the order of $2 million a year. Altogether, we spend about $800,000 a year as a city for vehicle fuel. The gas might be able to replace about a third of that, or about 40% of the electricity at Dillman, which costs about the same amount. The conclusion that we reached, then, is that operation maintenance or O&amp;M savings alone can't pay for a project like this. But there are wild cards in the financial story. If we, right now, we expect the expansions that we're doing at the plant to last about 15 years or more. If the southern basin demand increases significantly faster than that, we may have, we may be seeking a plant expansion sooner. We may also get increasing fuel and electrical prices over time, but the real big wildcard is that there's a, there may be a market for renewable energy credits that would be awarded to us if we made the gas and then sent it on the pipeline, in which case, we could sell those credits, and that would add a revenue stream. Right now, we have no estimate for what that might generate in Indiana. The other thing is that O&amp;M isn't the whole story. Projects like this can be evaluated in terms of something called a triple bottom line, which includes the financial, the environmental, and the social benefits that the project has for the community. One of the benefits, a couple of these, are that anaerobic sludge is more easily composted for land application, so it could be used to improve farm fields and so forth. There's a value in reducing our CO2 emissions, and there would be social benefits to the community that really are not the kinds of things engineers can quantify. That's up to others. So what happens next is there will be an expanded Waste to Energy Task Force to examine all the intangible issues related to this kind of a project and make final recommendations. And I'm always happy our staff can, we can talk about this for hours. So if council members want to come out and talk with us about the waste to energy question, we're more than happy to do it anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kelson? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
First of all, the same request as of Mr. Wason. Can you send the files or the PowerPoint to the council?
Yes, I sent it to Mr. Sherman before I came.
Excellent. So we will get it. And then my second question is, since Blucher Pool already separates the brown sludge, why not do this at Blucher Pool instead of Dillman?
It's really not cost-effective. The capital costs of building it are so big for such a small plant that it's just not cost-effective. If you build a new plant, the break-even point between aerobic and anaerobic digestion is at about 12 million gallons per day. We would be retrofitting existing plants, so we really wouldn't be close at Blucher Pool.
So can you review for us, what's the difference in size between Blucher Pool and Dillman?
The Dillman Plant is rated for 15 million gallons per day. The Blucher Pool Plant is rated for six. Average demand at Dillman is between, averages around 10 or 11 and/or more sometimes, and then the Blucher Plant is more on the order of two or three million gallons per day.
Okay.
In summer, it's maybe half a million gallons per day sometimes because the students aren't here.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg, or Councilmember Scambaluri?
Thank you for the presentation. Two questions. First of all, just to confirm from my own understanding, it sounds like this is entirely a behind-the-scenes process, and it won't necessarily change anything a consumer does, correct?
Absolutely not, yes. We would still generate exactly the same finished wastewater we make now.
Got it. Thank you. And what do we know, or I guess, what do you know about other sources of funding? Are there state-level or federal-level partnerships or anything for this kind of project that we know about?
I don't believe that there really are. Wastewater is, we're actually one of the larger wastewater systems in the state, and I think most of that grant funding goes towards smaller systems that don't have the financial resources to do projects like this. We will certainly look at it, look for opportunities if they exist, but at this point, I don't know of any.
And so at this point, it looks as if we would have to take on debt in order to do something like this if we wanted to?
Yes, we certainly would, yes.
And you said debt service was 2 million annually?
On the order of 2 million, just, you know, thumbnail estimate was like 1.9, but it all depends on how it comes in.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you for the report, Mr. Kelson. With the methane that is generated being a potential fuel source, has there been discussion with retrofitting vehicles in order to use that?
Yeah, we really can't retrofit them. That's not very cost-effective. What would happen? It would happen over vehicle replacement cycles. So we would identify vehicles, say buses and so forth, that might be able to use compressed natural gas as a fuel. The best way to do it, as I said, is to put it on the pipeline and then buy it back where we need it.
Okay, and that's my next question. You said put it in a pipeline. Explain that to me.
Or the veteran?
Pipeline to where and what?
Well, the veteran pipeline that goes through the city.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we would have to discharge it somewhere like that.
I thought that was a market pipeline. You pipe it somewhere to sell it, or?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
We're at 10 minutes, but I'll allow a question for Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure. I just got a question about if we used, assuming a project like this happened at the Dillman Plant, if we generated electricity instead of pumping it onto the gas grid, would that require additional capital outlay in terms of some sort of turbine and facility to generate electricity, and what would that look like?
It would. The capital outlay would be pretty significant on that, but if we were to connect to the pipeline, I think the connection fee that's been suggested to me is on the order of a million bucks. So there's, there are costs going that way, too. We also would have to treat the gas before we could sell it, so, but the big benefit might be the credits. That's where the benefit would lie. And if I may, can I make one more statement really quick? The debt service number of around 2 million is about 8% of our total wastewater revenue, so it'd be like an 8% rate increase, and I'll stop now. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson and Mr. Wason, for excellent presentations. We appreciate them very much. We go now to committee reports. Anybody with a report? Councilmember Sandberg, I think you wanted to report here.
Yes, thank you. The Plan Commission, of course, meets the second Monday of every month, and Monday of this week, we had two important items on our agenda that I'm happy to report past eight to zero unanimously by the Plan Commissioners. The first being the adoption draft of the Unified Development Ordinance. We had several options ahead of us, and the Plan Commission chose the second, which was to approve the draft as amended, and so that is further closure, and we're that much closer to getting the UDO completed with our mapping that will continue this year. But that was number one on the agenda. Number two is the Trinitas Development, which is a PUD on Arlington Park Drive and Arlington Road. This is not the same Trinitas project that we saw come before us in 2018 that this body rejected. Since that time, they have done some amazing work with our planning staff in configuring a good project that has such diverse housing in so many exciting areas that this one's going to be really hard to improve upon. Our first hearing was December 9th, and even from that hearing, Plan Commission made several recommendations that the petitioners did act on to make it even better, and so by the time it came to us on Monday, we were all pretty excited about what we have in front of us. I don't want to get into a lot of detail because I understand this project's going to come before us in an internal work session soon, but what is exciting is there are four areas of housing in this project. And Area A is probably the most exciting, at least from my point of view it is. This is going to be 45 units that's going to be prepared and designated and given and back to the city of Bloomington to develop, as we will, for affordable housing. And we've also asked that that be done in Phase 1, so Area A will be done quickly. Area B is going to include 162 townhomes on 7.11 acres. Area C is going to be more of a student residential multi-story unit, and then Area D will be developed as cottages and 112 duplex units. So the kind of housing that we've all been asking for and pushing for in the UDO is contained in this PUD. Again, there are many other details that the petitioners' Trinitas worked very carefully with the Plan Commission and staff to get right, including some buffering and some additional improvements to this project. So again, it's coming to us with a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission, but I would, I would hope that if you have any detailed technical questions, you might save them for a work session when our plan staff can be here in more detail to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go to, remember, reports from the public. We'll have 20 minutes of public comment. Can I see a show of hands who's planning to make public comment tonight? All right? On something not on the agenda, please go ahead and speak. You'll have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. I'll just deliver what I was gonna. So I want to preface this with a little bit from the 2008 Greenway System Plan. It was passed by this body in 2008 as a resolution, as a planning document, not as binding legislation. And it has a section on sidewalk maintenance. And it says, "Maintenance may include repairing cracks and holes in bicycle pedestrian facility surface, removing dead or dangerous tree limbs, and regular pruning of vegetation along the bicycle and pedestrian facility, removing snow and ice." And then it, it says, whose job that is? It says, "Maintenance of bicycle and pedestrian facilities within the road right of way, including bike lanes, side paths, connector paths, and sidewalks, will be the responsibility of the Public Works Department." So that, that happened. So I got a story now. My kid was born on New Year's, so a lot of times, the doctor wants us to do like an annual checkup. That tends to happen in snow, and so twice, we've wound up walking in the snow to get there. Last year, I was lazy about it, and I decided to take the bus. And the surprising part of taking the bus is that somebody transferred and got on the same, the three outbound, and they also, young family with a kid, and it turns out they're going to the same doctor I am, out on Landmark and Third Street. I'm on that bus because I'm, I'm a jerk. I'm going against the flow. I got plenty of money for a car, but I want to live differently. But I, I'm just gonna go out on a limb, and I'm, I'm gonna say they were probably on that bus because they couldn't afford a car. And so we got, the bus stop's about a block and a half, maybe two blocks from the doctor. Pretty convenient, really, but it's January, and it was last year, not this year. And there was a lot of snow. There's about six inches of snow, and on the sidewalk, the snowplows along West Third Street, you know, the highway style West Third Street, the snowplows had pushed all that snow onto the sidewalk. And it's not, I don't know if you've been on the beeline when the snow gets really packed down. It wasn't like that, you know? It was like, it was like walking on riprap, like the eight inch kind of mini boulders that they use to stabilize a hillside, you know, because the snowplow compacts it, it turns it kind of into a rock, and then it breaks it into pieces and puts it on the side of the road. And it was more than a foot deep across the entire sidewalk. It was really a, a technical challenge to navigate, and they had, they brought, bless their hearts, they brought a stroller. And they could have used a stroller. State law actually says in that situation, you're allowed to walk in the road if you want to. I didn't want to, and they didn't want to. I've seen people walk in the road there when there was snow on the sidewalks on West Third Street, but they didn't. And so they dragged their stroller, and they carried their kid, and they tried not to fall, and really kind of a harrowing experience, and then they have to cross West Third Street, which never very much fun. And, you know, you already as a policy, as a goal, eleven years ago, decided this question, where, where Public Works will maintain sidewalks. I, I wound up talking on the phone to Mr. Wason, Director of Public Works, and suffice it to say, we don't have a very good relationship, but I suggested that if they can't clear the sidewalks, they at least shouldn't push a foot and a half of extra snow onto the sidewalks. And he literally laughed. And I remember last week, Councilmember Sandberg said, discussing the committee's change, that it's important that the sidewalk, or that the, sorry, that the council have a good working relationship with city staff. And I, I do think that's important. I don't have a good relationship with city staff as a sidewalk user, as somebody who walks with my kid to the doctor on West Third Street. I do not have a good relationship with Public Works. Okay, I'm a jerk, whatever. I, nobody's, has to like me, but this other family, they were just, they just didn't have money. And they didn't have a very good relationship with Public Works that day either. And I really don't know what to say. I'm just so disappointed. Last year, nothing happened. I know this is only the second week for you guys. I want something to happen, maybe this week or next week. I really, I don't see why this has to take forever. When they closed the sidewalk on Roger Street, the right of way there is more than thirty feet wide. It's enough for three cars, four cars. It's actually enough for five cars across if they're, if they're touching. And they closed the sidewalk, you know? They said, oh, we can't, we can't take a row of parking to not close the sidewalk. They just closed the sidewalk. Like, we need to demand better. And I guess that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to legislation for a second reading and resolutions.
Appointments to boards and commissions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that, yes.
And we have one?
Are there any appointments?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one recommendation for the Commission on Sustainability. We would like to recommend Bronson Bass.
Needs a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Mr. Bass is approved. Their compliments. Wish him luck. Any other appointments? Seeing none, now we will go to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty dash O two be introduced, read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty O two, final approval to issue economic development notes and lend the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Walnut Woods, eight eighteen, East Miller Drive, and the Reverend Butler Apartments, twelve O two, West Eleventh Street, Bloomington, R A D I L P petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance twenty O two authorizes the city of Bloomington to issue up to eleven million dollars in aggregate principal amount of its City of Bloomington, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Note, Series twenty twenty A, Walnut Woods Reverend Butler Project, and its City of Bloomington, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Note, Series twenty twenty B, Walnut Woods Reverend Butler Project, collectively the notes, in one or more series and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Your committee recommendation was eight zero zero.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty O two be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Allen is here to present. Mr. Allen?
Just briefly, these are economic development bonds. Just to reiterate, that'll enable us to renovate some public housing that's going into a, a new program, the RAD program from the Bloomington Housing Authority. This is not to exceed eleven million dollars, as I believe you said, but the total investment will be somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen point seven million dollars. If you look at Section Five of the loan agreement, it specifically specifies that in these instances, the city does not bear any general obligation for these bonds. We don't back it up. It's backed up by the project. What we are doing essentially is lending our tax exempt status and our status as a public entity to do these economic development pass-through bonds. Otherwise, if you have any questions about the project specifically, we have a representative from the Bloomington Housing Authority here, and I'm happy to take any questions that the council members may have.
Thank you. Before I go to questions, what does the RAD project stand for? What does RAD mean?
That's a great question.
Might as well hear from...
Hi, Amber Scobie, Executive Director of the Bloomington Housing Authority. RAD is the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. It was passed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Well, it was passed by Congress in 2012 and then has been a way that housing authorities can gain access to additional capital from the private market through something like tax credits or loans or bonds as a way to renovate their affordable housing stock and also switch it from a more reliable public subsidy program called the Housing Choice Voucher or Section Eight Funding Platform, which is a lot more stable and predictable than public housing subsidy.
Thank you. We'll go now to questions from members. Councilmember Flaherty.
Specials for Ms. Scobie. With the RAD program and switching to more of a Housing Choice Voucher type model, is there a difference versus public housing in terms of how utilities are paid? Forgive my ignorance, but my understanding was typically with public housing, utilities are included in, in what's paid, whereas with, with Section Eight or Housing Choice vouchers, that's usually not the case, and that can be an issue where, you know, if we aren't careful about energy efficiency and other measures, that can really be a burden for, for folks. So I'm curious about that possible impact with the use of, or transition to RAD.
Okay. So my first part of the answer is just overall what it might look like in public housing authorities across the country. Many of them converting to something like this RAD program would put the utility payments on the tenant, and so the tenant's responsible for the utility bills. However, there is a way within the voucher program to calculate utility assistance if needed. For us in Bloomington, we've always paid the utilities. The Housing Authority has paid them and will continue to pay them after we do this conversion. We've had a lot of feedback from residents about that. They really value that predictability and just not having distress of a separate utility payment that, you know, you have a cold winter, your heat bill goes up, and how to budget for that. So we plan to continue paying the utility costs, and we're also working on installing energy efficiency furnace, cooling systems, reducing water usage, all of those energy-saving type measures as much as we can since we are paying the bill and hopefully educating residents about utility savings in ways that can help eliminate some of those excessive costs.
That's great. Thank you for clarifying.
Further questions? To my right?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Councilmember Smith. Well, we're in the questions. There's an opportunity for comment. If no other que, Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. I was just curious, as far as the rents versus the utilities, what percentage of that, do you, do you have an idea? The percentage of the utilities cost on the overall rent, since they pay one fee, but you, your authority pays the utility. So what is that percentage roughly, if you know?
We, we master meter everything, so I don't really know specifically unit to unit because we pay like a bulk fee.
Overall, your cost, do you have any estimate?
Oh.
Yeah, it's not individual, but yeah, the overall part.
A couple hundred thousand dollars a year for Reverend Butler and Walnut Woods alone in utility costs. And then our other project, Crestmont, could be close to three hundred thousand dollars a year or more in utility costs.
Okay. And do you have an idea of the percentage of, of that cost of the overall revenue that you're getting? And, and we can talk later. I mean, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I was, since you pay that, I want to know what the percentage of the overall cost was, which is, which is a resident benefit, I think.
I'd have to do the math on that, but it is probably, well, I don't even want to say it, I don't want to guess, but I can look it up for you and get back to you on that.
That's fine. It's not, it's not urgent, it's something that concerned me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions?
Will other...
Councilmember Smith.
Sorry. Will other stock in Bloomington Housing Authority Affordable Housing, will other ones be converted in a similar process? And is that a scheduled process that happens over the years?
Yeah. So our plan is to do a portfolio conversion. So Walnut Woods and Reverend Butler are two of the communities we operate, and then starting this summer, we'll, we'll start thinking about pre-development work and how to finance the renovations for Crestmont, which is our largest community, one hundred and ninety-six units.
Thank you.
And then after that's done, we won't have any more public housing in Bloomington. It'll all be transitioned to this platform. We'll have better financial stability and totally renovated units.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a chance. Did you say we will have no more public housing?
Nope.
I mean, will, does that mean you won't have a job? Is that, I don't understand.
No, we'll be, we'll be operating Reverend Butler, Walnut Woods, and Crestmont. The Housing Authority will still be the management agent, and we'll be creating these ownership structures with tax credit investors for a limited period of time. The Housing Authority will still own the land, and then these ownership structures with the tax credit investor owns the improvements. And my staff at the Housing Authority, especially within maintenance and property management, will operate these programs, and will also have a voucher program, so we'll still be administering over thirteen hundred Housing Choice vouchers. So still have a housing authority, we just won't have a public housing program. It won't be defined as public housing in Bloomington, but the structures will all still be there. They're just funded through a different program.
So while we're here, I've been reading lately about the difficulty that some people who have vouchers have in finding housing in other cities. To what extent would you say that's a problem here? And, you know, how concerned should we be about that potential problem?
Um...
That landlords tend to refuse people with vouchers?
It's an issue. There are a couple of things happening in the market right now. There are some projects being renovated. Limestone Crossing is one, and also, I think it's called College Square, formerly Walnut Grove, they're doing renovations there for, they're holding some vacancies to do those renovations, and they're not leasing quite as strong as they were, but hopefully those are, be finished soon, and we'll be able to see an increase in voucher usage on those programs. A little bit of the IU dorm, that's put some pressure on the rental market, so we're, you know, kind of trickles down a little bit to our clients. But it is a concern. I think that as a housing authority, property owners and landlords are also our customers, and so we're always looking for ways to do better customer service, to look at our payment standards, so that's the maximum amount of housing assistance that Housing Authority would pay on behalf of our families. We try to be as competitive with those as we can, knowing that property owners, you know, have to have some level of income to help maintain their properties. And again, we try to just be good, good partners and good customer service folks for those property owners. But yeah, we're always looking to do outreach and working also with our voucher families that they're going out and meeting with folks, talking about the benefits of being a voucher program participant, landlord, and, you know, trying to also recruit new property owners that way. So it's a lot of different efforts going on at one time.
I don't envy your, your task, so thank you very much. Any further questions before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance twenty O two. If there's any comment, please come to the podium. You'll have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. The horse still walks, so I still beat it. Poor people walk. Anywhere you see public housing, subsidized housing, Section Eight housing, you'll see people walking. And the Miller Street Walnut, whatever, is, is, it's essentially on a cul-de-sac, so if they are going to go anywhere, you know, I'm sure there's a way to cut through a gap in a fence or something, but if they're going to go anywhere, they're going to walk on, on Miller Drive there. And Miller Drive has a, a good amount of car traffic for that reason. Drivers have that same choice. And if you go east of the eight one eight, East Miller, then you'll see that there is sidewalk on the south side of the street, but it's not on the north side. And if you're taking the one bus, does run right, right there. And if you're taking the bus to downtown, you can catch it on the south side of the street where there's sidewalk. If you're taking it from downtown, it's going to drop you off on the north side of the street. You can waste about a half hour of your day, and it'll drop you on the south side of the street. But, so you're going to have to cross, there is no crosswalk, there's no sidewalk, there's no, if you wanted to go to the north side of Miller Drive, it wouldn't, it wouldn't accommodate that, that behavior. You'd be walking in the street, or you'd be walking in the mud. And if you go, if you continue east on Miller Drive, there is no sidewalk on the south side. Now the sidewalk is on the north side. I hope you saw that coming, because that's the story if you ever walk in Bloomington. If there is only sidewalk on one side of the street, it's the side you don't need, and it changes next block, and so you have to cross again. It's just an example, you know, Adam Wason just said that we built somewhere on the order of thirty thousand linear feet of sidewalks last year. I think that's a little bit of an overstatement, but we're at least a quarter million linear feet behind just to have a basic network within, you know, Miller Drive is not the other side of the planet. This is basically walking distance to downtown if you're ambitious. And the idea that there's connected sidewalks out there is a joke, you know? Adam Wason had a map, and all those green lines on the map, every one of them had little one hundred foot gaps in it, and you, you don't notice that because it's so zoomed out. But those little gaps, the sidewalk doesn't connect, and so the people who live in these projects are going to wind up walking in the street because there's no sidewalks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment on ordinance twenty O two? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for debate. Is there anyone who has a comment on ordinance twenty O two? Councilmember Smith, did you want to say something?
I did want to say that Amber and Bloomington Housing Authority, you do really important work in our community. So thank you very much.
Any other comment on ordinance 2002? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, related point in response to Mr. Alexander's comment. I think his point is well taken. We know well from census data and otherwise that it is in fact the poorest people in our communities who walk and bike and take transit in the highest percentages. These are real equity issues and public safety issues. And while I appreciate Mr. Wasen's presentation there tonight, I think there are some fundamental problems with the amount of funding we give to improve our pedestrian safety and access. And it's something we should definitely be keeping in mind in the context of public housing or Housing Choice vouchers in particular, and something we'll probably need to consider ongoing in terms of how to change our revenue stream and funding sources for how we address those things. So not directly about the ordinance exactly, but I think related and an important point to keep in mind going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any other debate or motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2002?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
That passes 9-0. Thank you for the presentation, and we now will move on to legislation for first reading.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2003 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2003 to amend Title IV of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Business Licenses and Regulations Regarding Adding Chapter 4.32 Nonconsensual Towing Businesses. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance initiated and shaped by the efforts of former Councilmember Andy Ruff and former Councilmember Dorothy Granger amends Bloomington Municipal Code Title IV by adding a new Chapter 4.32 to provide for the licensing and regulation of towing companies that engage in the practice of nonconsensual tows. The ordinance includes provisions related to licensing requirements, insurance coverage, signage requirements, fee limitations, and the retrieval of towed vehicles, among other provisions. The purpose of this ordinance is to increase community safety and protect residents from the harmful effects associated with predatory, commercial, private towing.
Thank you. We now move to additional public comment. This is 25 minutes set aside for comments on items not on the agenda. People have not yet spoken. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll go now to issues regarding our schedule. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, just a reminder that Friday afternoon, because of council work session, there is one item ready for consideration. I'll just join if you come up with one to attend to the agenda. It's the PUD that Councilmember Sandberg talked about earlier this evening. It is scheduled for that work session, introduction of the work bit, Land Use Committee, as called for, and then in terms of council, no reason to second, whether session after the introduction of the fifth. So that's the one item. I'm wondering a sense whether you want to meet or can we, Friday afternoon, to discuss it. And are there other items you want to take up on the agenda?
First, let's see a show of hands of who would be interested in attending that work session on the 24th. 24th. We have more than enough to hold the session. If there are any other items, I mean, we don't have to have them tonight, right?
Correct.
Right. But if there are...
The other matter is scheduling during the cycle. And as you know, the end of tonight, the Land Use Committee is going to discuss an ordinance, and that is scheduled to, for potential seconds here on the 29th. Last week, you decided to hold a special session on the 29th as well to further consider Resolution 2001 regarding standing committees. So two meetings at night. Last week, you suggest you scheduled the special session for 6:30. At the end of the Land Use Committee tonight, we'll have a sense of whether there's a need for a second meeting and when it would occur. So this is a good time to say, let's rethink whether we're going to need for a special session on the 29th, given the Land Use Committee. So I open that up for your discussion. If you want to change the time, you'll have the time to do it.
We have time to discuss it. If there's anyone who wants to comment on the idea of the schedule for January 29th? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I think it's highly likely that we will want a second Land Use Committee meeting on the PUD before us tonight. And so I would appreciate moving the regular session to 8 o'clock, or we might do 7:45. I don't know. We could start as early as 5:30, I think, for Land Use, but it will take two hours. So it'd be nice to have a break in between there.
Any other comments on scheduling? I will say that we have never gone beyond two hours in Land Use Committee at any one meeting. And 5:30 is a little early sometimes. I would just as soon do 6 o'clock Land Use and 8 o'clock special session if we turn out to need. I mean, I am content to wait until we see what the result of this meeting tonight is going to be. And also, it'll give us a chance to ask staff whether they have a preference as to early or late meeting, if there's no other time constraint on it. So, but the most significant reason to put the Land Use Committee first is that they are, at least by our rules, still time limited, whereas the special sessions committee the whole are not. There's no, we have no rule to limit those. And we have had the case before where a committee the whole or a regular session came before the standing committee and went an indefinite period of time. So, you know, I would prefer to put the committee before the regular session. But, Mr. Sherman, I guess the question would be, when do we change the schedule if we determine at the end of Land Use Committee tonight that we want to change the schedule for the 29th?
Well, I think that given what I heard, it looks like we will have a Land Use Committee on the 29th. And so the decision tonight, now that we have the Land Use Committee, it has to be about changing the time of the special session. So a motion to reschedule the special session from 6:30 PM on the 29th to 8 PM, no earlier than 8 PM on the 29th, would, I think, cover what we've got in our...
I might suggest that we don't have to characterize it as no earlier than, that if the special session's at 8 o'clock, the committee has to finish its work before 8 o'clock. So we can figure the committee time later. Is that correct?
Could you repeat that?
Can we figure out the committee time later and just fix the time of the special session at 8 PM?
That's what I was suggesting.
Okay.
Later on this evening, when the Land Use Committee wraps up its business, it should be scheduled.
Got it. Understood. Mr. Sims?
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, I didn't review my schedule. Do you have a sense for how many agenda items will be on the regular session, 29th?
The 29th, yes. So what are, for resolution, this standing committees, there are two reports that come together. One is a sidewalk report, going forward, recommendations of the nonconsensual toting. And that report, that's on my mind, there's one from the administration, the county on the 29th as well.
Okay, thank you. That answers.
Is there a motion to change the time? If not, we'll move on. Did you want to change the time?
Move adjournment.
I move that we change...
Go ahead.
Is there a second to that?
Any other motion is in order before adjournment?
I, yes, I wanted to move that we change the time of the special session on January 29th to 8 o'clock.
Needs a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there limited debate, I believe, on this motion? Is there any comment on the motion to change time? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
If we're having Land Use at 5:30, is that what we're thinking, on the 29th?
We'll see.
The, I personally would not want to schedule a meeting that's longer than two hours. I try to put 15 minutes between meetings, so 5:45 to 7:45 would be a reasonable amount of time for that second meeting if we feel we need that much time.
Okay. Yeah, I think just keeping them as close together as possible would be ideal.
Okay. Any other comments on the motion?
Total motion?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0. The special session will be scheduled for 8 PM on January the 29th. And the Land Use Committee will be scheduled accordingly. Mr. Sherman?
Just one more matter. We have approved photos tonight, so if you can still stay in the class and rearrange yourselves and get some pictures for our work session.
Yes, please, everyone stick around for the photo without any other businesses. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
With motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Please stick around for the photo. The Land Use Committee meeting will start at 8 PM.